Okay, hello everyone. I will call the meeting of the One I spoke many to order. And we will start actually with a statement. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on CTSB TV. Thank you. And our first welcome, it's Dr. Collins. Thank you. Welcome to our your first school committee meeting. Started with us on June 1st and we've kept you incredibly busy ever since and you got to be on stage to. Welcome and shake the hands of our graduates and give wonderful remarks to our community and it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. I'm very, very pleased to be here and have the opportunity to meet some students. Which is what we're all about.
Yes, and there'll be more. So we will have an opportunity for Dr. Collins to address everybody later in the agenda. But we'll stick in order and our next would be hearing of visitors. Do we have any visitors who would like to be heard? Bear with me. I'm trying to look on two screens here, but I don't see any hands raised either in person or on the screen. Do I have one? What are we seeing? The tiniest possible prints. So there's a hand. And it's like I've got two hands. Okay, so folks in the audience, I'm going to allow it's Mark as Dawn to talk. And ask you to please identify yourself and give us your address, please.
Hello, I'm Don Jordan and I'm at 76 Brunel Avenue.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm sorry for being a little slow with the technology, just trying to get used to it.
I'm slow too. It's okay.
Go ahead. You've got the floor.
Okay, I just, um, I know you're, we're talking about a new drama position and I just wanted to weigh in a little bit on that. Um, having spent about 50 years in the professional theater. Um, I know you, it seems that you're looking for something to do both theater manager and drama teacher, run a drama program. And I just wanted to say that in, in general, those are two very different skillsets and two very different educations. And finding somebody who really does them both well is, is um, a tough proposition, let's say. Um, and I know that running managing the theater is an incredibly demanding job in itself. So I'm worried that looking for someone to do them both. Could just make it hard for to, for the person to fulfill, you know, both of those jobs well. And uh, it might be a better solution to find a way to, to have somehow two positions there. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Dawn. Um, with people on Zoom, we follow the same protocol that we do, just to clarify that we do when we're in person. Which is typically we hear comment and we don't necessarily, we don't typically do a back and forth, but your comments are very much appreciated and noted. And we'll let you know that this is an ongoing conversation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, I gotta do this for a second. So now I'm going to allow, so I have Giovanna Fessenden and I'm going to allow you to talk, okay? Are you are Giovanna?
Hi, hi, this is Giovanna Fessenden. Um, I just wanted, I have with me two of Mr. Billups's students.
Hi, I'm Evy Lynch.
I'm Madeline Hennessy.
We're both in the ninth grade.
Giovanna, just one second. I just want you to, just the protocol is to identify where you live and then, and then start back up. Sorry.
All right, of course. Thank you. So this is Giovanna Fessenden. I'm at 73 Della Field Drive in Lennox. And um, I have with me my daughter, Madeline Hennessy, who's in the ninth grade and her friend Evy Lynch, who is also of Lennox. And we are here to, um, to share our support for Mr. Billups. Evy, you wanted to speak?
Yes, hi.
Sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you again. I'm sorry.
Oh, is it just one of us at a time?
No, it's, it's an issue. I, I, we don't generally in these meetings, it is not for open comment to talk about personnel.
Okay.
Individuals, we typically, we would, you know, if you have something you want to send in writing or the students want to reach out to us, they certainly can. But when we have public meetings, we don't typically allow discussion of personnel at a, at a, at a meeting. And if you were, it's tricky, right? Because I bet you on screen, I can't even see you. But we do acknowledge that we want to hear from students, but when it comes to personnel matters. It, it's not appropriate for discuss personnel matters in this type of public meeting. Um, certainly we welcome the students reaching out to leadership individually.
Okay, one of the things that they wanted to share was their petition that they have gotten, that they've earned. Um, uh, how many, will you speak to it, Evy?
Yeah, we have over 200 signatures.
245 now.
Yep.
This is awkward because you're on screen and I can't even see a picture of you. But again, that's a personnel matter. It doesn't mean that you can't send it in. And then they can't go ahead and even, you know, seek to meet with leadership if they would like to. But in a public meeting like this, we don't, that's, that's not appropriate in the public meeting to discuss personnel. But we're not trying to.
What's the scope of what can be discussed?
Sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, just what's the scope of what is allowed to be discussed?
Well, it's a broad scope for public meetings, but when it comes to individual personnel matters, that's. It's the individual privacy of, of the individual and also we don't discuss personnel in a public meeting. But the students certainly, if they have concerns and they would like to speak to the, make an appointment with the superintendent or with the principal. Um, and the people that make those decisions at the school committee, we don't make hiring decisions. We hire the superintendent. Um, and then the superintendent is our CEO, as we use that analogy to help to hire principals. And um, other leadership members of the leadership team who then have jurisdiction over hiring. Faculty staff, et cetera. So when it comes to a personnel matter, this is not the place that we would do that. However, we do recognize that the students may want to be heard and we would like them to make an appointment and try to have that in a private setting.
I understand. So in terms of not speaking about anybody specifically. Um, you know, Lennox has been fortunate to have a theater manager and also a drama teacher. Who has inspired so many students to go beyond what they thought were, was capable, what they were capable of doing.
I'm gonna stop you again. I'm sorry, but again, and I apologize, but the reality is, once you, you can move to titles. But when you, when you have a, a, a school like ours where the title is the person, again, I would ask that you not try to address personnel. I, I hear that the students are very inspired by their participation in theater and I really do appreciate that. Um, and I think getting, being heard about how they feel about personnel again.
So I wouldn't, yeah, there is no, I'm not speaking directly about personnel. I'm talking about their experience, what, what's.
You are, without due respect to you, you are actually speaking about individual when you talk about an individual. While you say their names, not, you're still talking about individual.
So what about the students' experience, not related to the individual, but just their experience at, in theater?
Right, but the students, the students can certainly speak to their enjoyment or their experience with being in theater. But if they're speaking about an individual.
Right, so there's, we're, we're gonna have no discussion about a specific individual, but just about their experience in theater in general.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you because I was finishing my sentence.
All right, so yes, there's no, we will make sure that we're not discussing about a specific individual, just about their experience in theater at Lennox.
So I want to say just one more thing is because I, I really, I think if you know me, you know, I really value student voice. And it's really important that students feel heard and that they are exercising their rights to participate in their school. And I know it means so much to them. So what I, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned because A, I can't even see you. And then B, um, if we get off a little bit, then I have to correct and stop. So I, I really invite and wonder if the students wouldn't appreciate sitting down and having a meeting. Um, and presenting their petition, having concerns addressed in it, in not in a public forum like this.
Sure. Well, I, I'm, I appreciate that and they're be happy to do that with you. Um, but just generally, I would think that the program has gone well and students have been inspired. And students that were not interested in drama are passionate and they really enjoy the experience. And we're lucky to have a drama department at the school that is, um, you know, so, uh, inspiring to our young people. And it's rare, it's hard to inspire young people these days, especially in the area of academics. And especially to go into, um, uh, areas of academics and the arts. In which they may not have been interested in the path, like they didn't even realize. So I guess that's just my, uh, my, 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 what I'd like to share is that the, the department is awesome. And we're lucky to have it the way it is right now.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We'll look forward to more conversations with the students.
Have a good day.
Thank you too. Sorry, I just have to do this. All right, I think we're good. Uh, thank you. Thank you for all bearing with me on the technology of that. It is, sometimes easier to have people in front of you than you can see. Um, okay, so moving on, um, we have no other public comment in the room. So our move on to unfinished business and we'll be discussing the LEA Unit C contract and voting on that. So I'll turn to Chairman of HR Committee or perhaps please to present on that if you would.
Yes, so you all have a copy of the agreement. Tentatively with Unit C, uh, which will cover beginning July 1 for three years. Unit C did ratify it, so they are just awaiting our ratification. Typically, for any contract like this, we would also have to tell manager vote. He is conflicted out because of a relationship in Unit C. So we looked into what to do and the included answer was that he just abstains from. From the vote. So it is just a set of us. Um, I guess I'll just sort of run briefly through the key provisions and I'm happy to answer any questions. I, in general, I think it was a really good and collaborative negotiation. I think everybody was on the same page about what we wanted to achieve. And what the key goals were, particularly given the cost of living increases in recent years. There was a goal to raise, um, total compensation about 15% over the coming three years. Uh, and so we looked to have that basically go up 5% in year, um, in year one, concentrate that all in across the board wage increases. And then in years two and three, have lower wage increases, but additional. Compensation added elsewhere. And so the key, uh, other things that we added in years two and three. Let's say most importantly, we substantially expanded the experience factor. Our unit A teachers have a whole schedule with the staff system and every year, um, move up. By default, we don't have that for Unit C, where the wages gets connected to the position. And so this creates a structure where after 10 years, after 15 years, after 20 years, there are significant. Pay increases, which we thought was both fair and reasonable and addressed our desire for retaining our longest serving staff. Um, there were some particular positions that had slightly higher, um, year over year increases, either to address market factors. Administration was concerned about, uh, to ensure that we're bringing up wages at the low end. So $18 now will be the lowest that in state this coming year. Um, significantly increased compensation for class coverage. So if basically the unit C staff members playing the role of a substitute teacher, they receive an additional stipend. Uh, and we just have not increased that in a long time and hitting long time and we're far behind what pretty much the rest of the accounting pays. And so wanted to bring that up. Uh, and then finally, there was just a bunch of cleanup. The way that vacation schedules were calculated and so forth did not reflect. The types of staff we have at this point among other things. So clean that up and moved up. Um, how quickly they, they moved into having to be severe vacation, which is now after three years. Um, so those are the key provisions. I think, like I said, it went on on both sides, felt cared about the process and conclusion. But certainly happy to address any question.
Maybe, thank you. Questions? If we can, I'll say thank you for your thorough preparation of us. Team was you and I.
Yes.
Yes. So thank you. Um, here are no questions? All in favor?
If you need a motion.
To move the contract.
I'll make a motion that we accept the. Uh, that we get the. That we get the. That we get the agreement between the town Lennox School Committee and the Lennox Education Association, Unit C for the duration of July 1st, 2020. Um, so can we take that up? Express the date?
You want to? Can I get the date if you want? July 1st, 2023.
July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2026.
I will stack hands. All those in favor? Thank you. Um, in this kind of wonky process of doing open comment on the computer. I did see that I missed a comment that actually the hand was raised around the same time as the previous commenter. So I feel like it'd be appropriate at this point to allow. Courtney, are you prepared to speak? If you could let us know your address and if you could also. And you could unmute if you can speak if you're muted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can hear you now. Yes, we can. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Courtney Gilardi. My address is 980 East Street in Lennox. Um, I want to welcome Dr. Collins. Um, and I want to welcome all of the new school committee members and thank you so much for being here and enriching the lives of our Lennox students. Um, I understand that I can't talk about a specific staff member, but I would like to talk about a transparency process. Of when, um, students and parents hear concerns. And hear issues and take those to administrators and they are graciously acknowledged with letters of thank you. And yet, the students continue to feel like their voices are not heard. And things escalate to administrators to ask for listening sessions. As you so beautifully suggested that the students and perhaps even involved parents have in a private setting. I loved Mr. Collins, Dr. Collins' welcome letter to the community. He said he was going to use the rest of the school year to work on better understanding our school committee and its various needs. And identify where and where not change is appropriate and really listen to our community. And I reached out and asked, um, due to the 245 signatures on the school petition. For students advocating to have such a session and the answer was, no, not at this time. We're not interested. And it's the end of the school year. Um, for some of our seniors, it's our last opportunity to hear their voices. Um, and the students were really brave tonight, wanting to speak, um, share their advocacy, their efforts and their concerns. I just want to make sure that we are creating transparency. We're creating a forum where people feel safe to speak out, um, to advocate for what they're passionate and care about. And that the students feel that when they take efforts, not only are they received and, and acknowledged and said, thank you. But there's actually some process for their voices to really be heard. So I just want to thank you and hope that we can go ahead with that listening session before the end of the year.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next item, um, which is actually about students. So it's the students, it's under correspondence. So it's the students' civics project. And, um, I did have the opportunity, many students within the 10th grade, this is Ms. Hamilton's civics class. And the students, um, Ms. Hamilton shared with me the student civics project overview, which is the students. Do a lot of work to identify needs in their community, um, different issues that they'd like to see change about. It could be local, state, federal, and then they begin to do research about a whole policy or an issue comes to play. And we have three students who reached out to us with ideas. Now, this is part of their rated assignment in class, but actually the hope is that it's the beginning of a, a long effort to be engaged locally and civically and nationally. And so, um, the students who reach out to us, and I'm just looking, sorry. Speaking one second. Um, three, while there were groups of students, some worked in groups together and raised several issues. And my hope is actually if the students are willing, they will have them engage with our subcommittees around issues. And we had, um. Need to know, there we are. We had Abigail Fox, um, looking to talk about ADA compliance and handicap accessibility on doors. And I'm looking to my left and Ms. Kirby, who had done some work on taking a look at our buildings and some needs. And so perhaps the buildings committee, if Ms. Fox wants to reach out to you, I may, I'm going to refer her to the building committee to discuss that. That's okay. And then we have students talking about upgrades in the theater and thinking about grant funding ideas. And that might be appropriate either for the TLC committee or the finance committee or both, maybe even building. Um, the students did have some creative ideas around grant funding that, um, Ms. Falcowski is our director of finance and budgeting. Also has looked into for us. So we'd like to, we're gonna invite the students to join us to have conversations. And the students will be finished with their assignments. So it's also okay if they hand the baton to another group of students who might be interested. So we'll be talking about that. And then a third was Abigail Winger and Jalen Cool. Her name correctly, um, wanted to talk about accessibility to free menstrual products in the school bathrooms. And I think that would be a great subject for our TLC committee. So we're going to invite the students to engage with us around that. And again, they finished their project and they did a great job, sent letters to us and they had done a lot of research. Um, so the hope is we'll continue to connect with students around issues in this school and, um, thank you for reaching out. Okay, and next we have, okay, our board report, which would be approval of our minutes from the May 15th, 2023 meeting. If we, if I can have a motion, will motion approve please?
I'm motion approve this whole many meeting minutes from May 15th, 2023.
Have a second? Second. Anybody have any questions and insert changes? All in favor? Okay, and okay, graduation summary. Yes, I'll give a quick one, but I'll hand things over to Dr. Collins. Um, I had the pleasure and privilege of presenting diplomas to our students. I believe we had 63 graduates on Sunday yesterday at our ceremonies at Tanglewood. And the weather cooperated and the students were just wonderful and they had a number of speeches and opportunities for us to think. About, and, and their peers to think about their past and their present and their future. And some wonderful entertainment and music and song. And it was really, really great. I felt very privileged, very special opportunity for us to help the students and their families. Celebrate this graduation day. It was really wonderful. So I'm grateful for being able to do that. And I'll hand it to you.
Right. Thank you. Uh, well, first with the graduation, I would agree absolutely. Um, what special place venue Tangowood is, um, particularly on such a gorgeous day to be able to celebrate the graduation. And I think that is very special. I believe that most schools across the country don't have the opportunity to have such incredible. Place to do that. And, and even though I think some of the students appreciate that now, I imagine that almost all of them will appreciate it when they get to look back on it later. And it was, uh, as my, as my first one, so someone coming in with that, with outside eyes. Wow, what a great, what an absolutely great job is done by all students. Speeches were. Um, you're powerful and passionate. The music was amazing. Kudos to certainly the, uh, the administration. At the middle high school made this happen and the guidance counselors, uh, it was, um, yeah, my introduction to graduation was wonderful. I was very pleased. I, I had high expectations and it exceeded my expectations. Nice job. Kudos to everyone that made that happen. Nice job. Doctor, it was nice job.
I was gonna say, if I could just add to that, our technical staff or the studio staff, um, the theater manager, everybody came and helped them. That was really wonderful. So no, they were out there and our guidance staff, Romeo and Ms. Murray really kept us all intense. It's great. I'll hand it over to you for your report, please.
Okay, so, uh, highlights and recognitions. So the graduation was first on my list. But then, um, we recently had a, we recently had a student, a Lennox student who was dual enrolled with BCC. Uh, graduate from there as well. So Mitch Austin, that's, that's quite a thing, right? To graduate from, from both institutions and, uh, be able to have those credits moving forward. So he's been dual enrolled his junior and senior year and that's, that's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. What a great program. Kudos to him. Uh, and then, uh, the other would be the, the girls tennis. They, in Iannis, they won. So now Wednesday, they got all the shoes parried to continue and the dream is alive. Yeah, very, very cool. Um, and finally, I had the opportunity to be involved in or check out. So many end of year activities, both at Morris, uh, and at the middle high school. And just some, some wonderful, great things that some of the, some of the productions and the concerts and the awards ceremony. For the graduates to receive, I believe it was 1.3 million dollars in scholarships. That's, that's true. That's impressive stuff. But what a great, what a great group. I'm. They are deserving of that recognition.
Yes, thank you.
Moving on to the Richmond tuition agreement. It is, so, uh, as, as you know, those students in Richmond can elect to come here on tuition for their high school experience. This year, the tuition is 11,000. It's going up, uh, 4.5% for next year will be 11,495. The following year, another 4.5%. It'll be 12,000, uh, 12,012. And then in 25, 26, it'll be 12,005,300. And that will, uh, require a bulk.
Yes. All right. And, um, typically we would open discussion with a motion, but perhaps before we even entertain a motion, um, we've all had a chance to review this document. But we do have new members. Does anybody have a question about how we go about this or anything about the Richmond tuition agreement?
I'd like to make a comment, um, about it and just something, I, I don't know who actually does the legwork on it. And making sure this all pulls together. But, but as I was reading this, it occurred to me that perhaps, um. In an effort to make sure that, that, um, uh, the, the Richmond School District and Lennox, uh, that there's good communication between them. And Richmond understands everything Lennox has to offer. Um, I just want to make the comment that perhaps, and perhaps it's been already, but that there could be, uh, some early fall. Uh, arrangement where perhaps someone from Lennox could be available in Richmond School District to just. In, in their environment, discuss what we have to offer and the advantages that, that Lennox could offer as they choose their, their next, their next step.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Do you have a sense of statewide of the typical tuition agreement rate is? I'm surprised it's not higher.
To this Falcowski is the person.
I think it is a little bit lower than most. I think some range vocational tuition is high. It's 18,900. Other tuitions range anywhere from 11, 12 to 15. Other tuitions range anywhere from twelve, eleven, twelve to fifteen. Um, the issue that we're facing is increasing it while keeping it at sustainability for the other school. So you look at our foundation budget for Lennox with the number of students we have written here. We're at thirteen seven. So it is a little bit lower than the foundation budget. Um, but the number of, doesn't take into account all students in the district, just the resident students for a foundation. Um, we did increase it by the half percent each year to try to move it towards, um, a higher rate. And Jake, everyone had a discussion with Peter Dunn concerning where they thought that they could land. And immigration was a small discrepancy. And so that's what both Jake and Peter Dunn felt would be acceptable to the town. Um, so we can look at it again when we go to the next one and see if we can bump it up even more to try to get it to where I mean, I can do a survey, but my instinct is, and I've done this survey before, that it's right around fourteen.
And you have tuition agreements with anybody else?
Just Richmond. Once in a while, we may have a special tuition agreement and that would encompass special rate plus services. So they'll tend to, but we don't have the only kind.
Thank you. Hey, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Richmond tuition period.
I will move to approve the tuition agreement between Latin public schools and the town of Richmond.
Second. Any other questions or comments? Those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, and now, um, everybody, and the year events are still getting back to you.
Well, so, um, that has been provided in the the package. If there are any questions about specific of your events. Um, it has been, there's an update, but if there are any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. Also, I, I also have the staffing.
Okay, we'll move to that.
Okay.
Unless anybody, we'll just stop. Unless anybody has any questions or comments about end of year events, I'll just only quickly say, I know in both buildings, everybody's really busy to try to both, um, wrap up a lot of the work and the projects that are happening as well as allow the students to have some celebration. And, and our high school, I think students are preparing for finals. So that's always a little bit more work, but hopefully some combination of, of work and fun. And so thank you to all of our staff and faculty and administration trying to get through these last two days. I know we've had to move things because of weather issues. Field day was today. Thank you for getting that moved around and families who supported that. So we're getting there. The official last day is the twenty-one, twenty-two. It's the half day. So yes, you could go to staffing updates.
Okay. All right. So, uh, positions that are, have been filled, uh, the middle school math teacher position is filled by Colin Finnegan. Librarian at LMMHS was filled by Catherine Pratt. Music at LMMHS by Matt Steckler and social studies at LMMHS by Asa Kerr. And we still have some, we still have some, uh, anticipated openings. And as those get filled, you will be, you'll be made aware.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And then it's started to move on to the Latin.
Yes, yes, please.
Um, I believe that just a staffing question on the LMHS administrative assistants. We discussed at a prior meeting hoping to happen in place toward the retirements to the back for the existing ones. Are there candidates in the pipeline there or are there still some different positions?
Yes, and I will, and I'll allow, uh, Dr. Ames to speak. Uh, the interview sat him for one of the positions. It was, uh, it was, um, pretty thrust and stayed following up on our technical base. There's still remaining one open. We need to hear an interview for, um, you know, uh, this point, for one exception, we threw out a petition every month to the five. Um, that it's every month to apply the school spread as well as a mass higher post. So we, we posted broadly, we can, we made a new, every applicant who wants to be with us. Um, we will continue to do so. Our intention is to, to make sure we have a, at least, eco overlap. Truth is, we can take as much as we can then such a month off. Um, so.
Good question. Thank you. Okay, so moving to.
All right. Um, Liz Bear is here to speak about the Latin field trip to New York City.
Um, hi. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Elizabeth Barron, the Latin teacher at LMMS. Um, and as way back, and I don't know how many of you know this, for almost thirty years now, we have had an exchange program with a high school in Lumeo, Italy. And we asked students, or I asked students, uh, to Lumeo in February of twenty twenty, which turned out to be quite you know, the interesting time. Um, and so actually what happens is we go, our students stay with the Italian families for six nights. We have three nights in Rome. And then the Italians come here and they spend three nights in DC and six nights with us. They never came in twenty twenty. So this is kind of a three years delay. Um, certainly not the same students because they have graduated from the school in Lumeo, um, but a different group. And then we will go to see them. Um, because it's out of state, you know, I plan their day trips when they're here for six nights. And so, you know, one day we take them to New York City for the day, uh, we take them to Boston for the day, but Boston, you know, it's in states. New York City is the one that's out of state, so I have to come here and get approval. Um, one of the two long distance tests down the weekend. Um, students who are hosting have an opportunity to come on some of these trips. They don't think this is very simple school day, but they get to, uh, go on some of these trips. And, uh, so that's what this is. Will be a trip to New York with the Italians to show the New York City. A favor. I don't know if anybody has questions about this side of the trip, the side of the exchange.
And I'm correct that we had to get this on this because you're, you're, as, as indicated in the document, in very early September. So.
It is very early September and.
Hard to plan.
Yeah, and you have to make sure the Italians are set according to their English grammar. And so that's that. Little, little, but we have eleven students coming, um, and two sharpers. And I know the sharpers.
But you have any questions? Or make a motion?
I move to approve the proposed New York City exchange.
One second.
And any other questions?
At the top.
Yes.
Well, then, um, Sarah, just what a wonderful opportunity for students. And thank you for all the work that was in to make that happen.
It's a great program. Um, I don't, I don't know whose kids. I know that, um, they even went, went on, um, had a great time. Did any of you still?
Um, no, um, French. And then I think there was a confusion with my youngest about trips. They got, goes going to cancer.
Okay. Um, but you know, certainly, I guess, all part of our combined trip went on the strip, um, and before my time. I did not show up on my students, my own children, rather, very much so. Yeah. So, but I do, I mean, I think I have parents of two students here who are hosting at planning to go.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so I have, we just need a vote. Um, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you so much.
Very much.
Okay, so the end of your, does she have anything else you want to add?
No. Questions?
Okay, I will, I will just add, um, relative to our scheduling over summer, we have our schedule for next year. I've begun to poll everybody about our summer. It seems that though there's like this tiny window when we're all here together, but I'll be reaching out to you this week and thinking in terms of a little bit more retreat work and getting together before our currently scheduled, um, retreat in August. It'd be good if we had one more to get together. Um, I'm also going to be reaching out to talk with you about, um, with each of our members of how, where you feel like training might be most helpful. We would like to learn more and see if we can get some consensus around that. We will have our, um, the training for new members, which is the training for us. If you need the information about that, let me know. There's options to do that online, which are not as dynamic, but otherwise, so in person, one that's most here is in September. So we'll be in touch about that. Now on to the item of, um, the subcommittee assignments. So, um, we polled everyone, were pretty much able to make the assignments. And then it was pointed out to me, thank you, Mr. Remler, that we actually put up a vote on that. So we have designated and people have selected, and I think it's worked out quite well, um, of each of our, um, subcommittees. And so we could, um, either, but we need a discussion, we can have a discussion and otherwise a vote on that to be in compliance with the rules around the subcommittees. And then I'll leave it to the chairs of each of the subcommittees to decide if you want to be over the summer. Um, I'm the chair of the TLC committee and I might try to at least, if we can make it work, have one meeting, have some thoughts about how we can engage with students, be ready for the fall and do some other support around, um, teaching, learning and culture initiatives. It will be worth it. Um, so any questions about the subcommittees? Hearing none, try not to motion.
I move pursuant to policy EDE, that could be, for the, the subcommittee chairs and members as proposed by the chair.
All set. Great.
Maybe, maybe it's gonna need a single sentence.
This is one's going to. Thank you.
But that.
Always seem to shake it fine.
Oh. I will draw a showing.
Not really with your mind.
So I think this will not be the thing that will cause us to come to blows for sure. Um, okay, great. Um, we're for a vote. All those in favor?
Uh.
Um, and I think that this, to end this portion of the, um, that what we typically, what we typically do for people who are new is to talk about what each of the subcommittees are working on, give some heads up if there's something appropriate. Sometimes we haven't met. Sometimes there isn't anything really important to talk about. Um, I'll leave it to the chairs of each of those subcommittees to talk about whether you wanted to say kind of where you thought you left off and where you might like to kick off between the summer and the fall if you'd like to, but I didn't give anyone a heads up about that. So if you don't, to. So you?
That's fine. Sure. Start with you. Um, so Megan Kirby, Chair of the Governance Leadership Subcommittee. Right now, um, we have left off on our policy review project, which is, um, done under the guidance of Liz Leffon from MASC. Kind of our guru for this sort of thing. Uh, the Governance Leadership Subcommittee, including the, the school committee, are the ones who set policy for the district handbook. So any kind of updates, changes, things like that, it could be as simple as, uh, a section is just not relevant anymore and needs to be removed. Those are all the things that we kind of go through, uh, section by section with Liz from MASC and, uh, adjust our handbook to kind of match, uh, MASC's latest edition. So right now we left off, I believe it's G, section G, I and J, could be totally wrong, but we were saving them for your arrival just because they focus heavily on personnel, um, things like that. So I probably will try to schedule a meeting this summer unless it's impossible, but, uh, we'll come from there.
And I think also I appreciate that the Governance Leadership Committee, um, left a few items that might be either for appropriate for freshman retreat, talking about mission or goals or et cetera. And then also that some might build before subcommittees such as the Teaching, Learning and Culture Subcommittee if appropriate. So some of those policies made about being distributed around and coming back to you, right?
Great.
Thank you. Uh, HR?
Um, HR has concluded negotiations for this year. There aren't any next year. There is two things that at least are, we, upcoming. One is, uh, there was an MOA, um, agreement, which is one mod of by something made contract. Um, that we do want to get finalized with PIA before school starts again. So at some point, probably this month or in the next month if we can, we should get together, um, just to address that. And heading into the new school year, something that will definitely be focused is, um, revising job descriptions. Um, particularly for units C, unit A, the most part of the job description is teacher. Um, the one thing that was clear during negotiation, C, was that those descriptions are locally out of date relative to, um, what the roles are at this point. So uh, I believe we, we can see to at least convene an initial meeting on that by October sometime. Um, so that's something.
And I am the Chair of the Teaching, Learning and Culture Subcommittee. And I think one of the things, as I've mentioned earlier, that I'd like to do is invite the students who have civics projects or recommendations or concerns to come and tell us what they'd like to do and see if we can help out with that. Um, and I do think there's a lot about culture that will want to be interfacing with Dr. Collins on. As we all know, we've had a lot of challenges in, um, trying to support students who have been bullied and also stepping up and ensuring that we have protocols, policies in place to prevent that and hold people accountable and they're not treating other fellow students or other people in our community appropriately. So I think that's a lot that we want to dig in. I think in this last year with so much change in leadership personnel, it was always on the agenda, but the idea was sort of where best to focus our energies. So I'm really hoping that Richmond have a lot of conversations. Uh, we did as part of the superintendent search, um, as Kirby and I were able to have a student forum where we actually, the students at that point were talking about what they wanted to see in leadership in a superintendent and we're able to talk a lot about concerns that they have. So my hope is that we can have some more of that type of conversation about um, things that students would like to see happening in our schools. We really do think that's important. And I think, um, we also are going to be supporting, um, our wonderful faculty in doing a lot of curriculum review and working online and seeing how we can provide some support with that. They're doing a lot of work. So we're really be more about how many support your work, certainly not to get in the way of it, but to see if we can be helpful. Um, and whatever else is needed that falls under those categories. So looking forward to our new committee with Kim, Kim and me. So, thank you. I need to.
Fight back, poke back around the horn. The, um, there's nothing pressing in terms of official business for finance, um, until the fall. Um, it may make sense to get together post a meeting that won't have much of an agenda beyond orienting and getting around, you know, talking with Dr. Collins about, uh, just on reasonable discussions, um, to be a little bit windowed in view of that's helpful. Um, and just make sure we know what the process is. Um, you all were doing over the summer unless raises anything else to our attention, unless we get any student queries specifically focused on wanting to pay to give them much.
Yeah. Well, there's some, there's a little bit that has budget consequences, I think will be interesting. So we can decide.
Everything is a question. That's.
Correct, correct.
And I will round it out here. Yes, so school building Subcommittee, the focus on obviously facilities and school buildings. Uh, just recently, I believe it was last week, the week prior, um, I spent some time with Jeremiah and Brenda. Thank you both for having me in. Um, to kind of do a compliance inspection of the buildings and we definitely have some work to do, uh, in the middle of high school primarily. And so I provided a pretty detailed report to everybody involved on the leadership team and I look forward to kind of helping, you know, walk through those areas for improvement that were identified. Uh, the school building committee is a pretty, is also obviously going to be the one to be involved with MSBA, Mass School Building Authority. Right. Yeah. Um, as needed. Yes.
It was quite a journey where it was quite a comprehensive board and process that Bob and several people amongst that committee put together. So I think that's going to be submitted, but it will be a big process as to whether or not we actually get invited in. But in the meantime, there's a lot to do to take care of our buildings and I really appreciate the work that you did. Just taking your time to go make that assessment if you're at least. Thank you. Okay, thank you all. Let's see. That's the end of our agenda unless anybody else has anything. We don't need the executive session, which was posted in the event that we need to do something about our units in contact, but having completed that process and approved that. our units in contact. But having completed that process and approved that, we've seen no need for an executive session. So I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second? Okay. All those in favor? Thank you all. Thanks for your patience to, I'm doing the technology a little bit here and it's